Is absent Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore is also absent. Please stand for a silent prayer or moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Esberry Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 7, 2022, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Before we begin, I wanted to let the members of the public know that Resolution 2022-178, a resolution amending temporary budget appropriations for the 2022 budget, has been removed from the agenda. We are now on to special event applications.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. The first application before you is from the Center for the Annual New Jersey AIDS Walk on May 1. Second is the School District's Community Health Fair on May 24. And the Rock and Roll for Recreation on April 28. And lastly is the Second Baptist Church Easter egg hunt on April 17. Are there any questions? If not, thank you.
We will now move on to the presentation by Fire Chief Kevin Ketti.
So on tonight's agenda is the purchase of a tower ladder by the fire department that was approved in last year's capital budget. Chief Ketti is here to discuss that apparatus and answer any questions that the council may have.
Good evening, everyone. This tower ladder purchase was approved in the capital budget as the city manager said. We first put the request in in 2019, but it was pushed back a couple of years. This year it made it into the capital budget. I believe you have a justification paperwork that was put into your packets. This would be the first time the city purchased a new ladder truck since 1985, 37 years ago. I can go over, I can go through the packet if you want, or just answer any questions that you may have.
No, why don't you get through it?
Okay. So this was our top priority in this year's capital budget. We wanted to replace, there's a typo here, it says 8390, but we wanted to replace, well, we want to replace 8390, but we want to move our tower ladder that we have now, which is a 1971 tower ladder that was mounted on a 2013 cabin chassis in 2013 through a grant, so it didn't cost the city any money. But back in the early 2000s, our ladder truck that was purchased in 1985 had a catastrophic failure and it had to be replaced. So we were able to borrow a ladder truck from Seagrave, or I'm sorry, from Hoboken, Seagrave that formerly served in the city of New York, but it was a spare rig for the city of Hoboken. They loaned it to us and then through urban, a joint project between the city and the urban enterprise zone, we were able to finance some new apparatus and we were able to purchase a tractor drawn aerial truck with then a 2006 tractor towing a 1994 rear part, or the ladder part. That delivery time and that was over a year, so once we signed the contract with Seagrave, they loaned us a traded in piece of apparatus to use in the meantime. The tiller truck served the city well over the years and in 2008, we were able to acquire a used tower ladder, 1971 tower ladder, actually from a donation through Bruce Springsteen as a spare backup piece of apparatus. In 2012, we secured the grant I spoke about. It was a $650,000 grant to take the ladder and mount it on a new apparatus and chassis. The federal government paid 95% of that cost and the 5% that the city was responsible for came from our dedicated penalty account, so it virtually cost the city nothing to do that project. And since we had a newer apparatus, still with an old ladder truck, we opted to run that apparatus first and we moved our tractor drawn aerial ladder to reserve status. Unfortunately, we lost our home in Allenhurst when JCPN sold their storage facility, so that apparatus had to be parked outside and after a couple of years in the weather, during an annual required safety check by an outside vendor, it was determined that there was a crack and the repair was very costly. It was actually more costly than the replacement of the vehicle. So that apparatus had to be retired. At that point, we were left with a 2013 cabin chassis, but a 1971 tower ladder. So we went to the city administration at the time and we purchased a reserve apparatus from Seagrave. It was an old, formerly used, retired fire truck, again from New York City, from the manufacturer. And that was purchased with the idea that if we signed a contract to buy a new one within two years, they would buy it back from us for $100,000. The two years came and went, but we were still confident that we'd be able to get them to make good on that agreement, even though it had expired. But when they inspected the vehicle, because again, that had to be left outside and it's weathered quite a bit and aged more rapidly than we had expected, they're only offering us $15,000 on the trade in for that, which leaves us where we are today and we're asking to move forward on the purchase of a new ladder truck for the fire department for the first time in 37 years, a brand new one.
You went from $100,000 to 15?
No, no, 50, 50.
50, okay.
This has to be built, right?
Yes, there's, it's about a 500 day, I'm sorry, I should have introduced Captain Conklin. When we designed this, I'm sorry, we put together a committee of everyone that was going to work on this and design the specs. There's four shifts, there's four truck captains, one for each shift, so they sat on the committee. And I brought Captain Conklin along to answer any technical questions about the specifications that you might have.
What's the lifespan?
Well, commonly, the recommendations are to replace them every 12 years, but we'll get 20 to 25 years out of that, the way we operate in Esberry Park. For example, the one we're using now has a 1971 ladder on it. So we'll get at least 20 years out of this, to 25.
So before we end off this, what are we doing tonight?
So this is, so you passed the capital plan with our budget last year, so now that our capital purchases have been approved, we're starting to purchase them. So on the agenda tonight is this tower ladder that is a resolution for you to approve. So I wanted to remind the council of what the need was before you made a decision on just such an expensive piece of apparatus.
And what's the ETA?
It varies, but because of the supply chain issues, it's about a 500 day time from the time we sign off the contract.
So about 18 months?
About 18 months.
Before you even get it?
Before we get it. They have to build it, which is, it's like that for everybody right now with all the supply chain problems.
I don't have any more questions. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Captain, appreciate it.
We are on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Clayton?
I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday, the city is sponsoring an Easter Drive through. There is going to be the Easter Bunny and any resident that wants to come, just drop between the hours of 9:00 and 11:00, the Easter Bunny will be here with Easter baskets and other fun things, so please come out and celebrate Easter on Saturday.
Who's going to be here?
Right here, right here, Eagle. The front of City wall.
Councilmember Kendall?
About two weeks ago, Esberry Park's Lululeah had a parade and one of the biggest sponsors, and I give this guy a lot of credit, was Will Wright. Took a lot of money out his pocket, he was able to put signs up, he was to talk, he go store to store, person to person, house to house, and they was able to have an outstanding parade. So I just want to give a shout out to Will Wright. Did an excellent job.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Just want to thank Dawn and the city departments for the job fair at the Esberry Park High School. We got all of our city departments that were hiring, police, fire, DPW, and then a number of businesses from the business committee to go to the high school, worked with the high school and the Board of Education to rotate 11th and 12th, and some younger grades, I think as well, in to fill out applications, had applications on hand, and you know, hopefully got a bunch of kids jobs this summer. So I want to thank everybody for participating in the job fair this year. That's all.
Matters from the city manager?
I have nothing, Melody.
Matters from the city attorney?
Nothing at this time.
Do you need to announce that that resolution is?
Okay. We are on to the public participation portion, I can never say that. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three minute time limit for each speaker?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor? If any members of the public would like to be heard, please go to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each speaker will have a three minute time limit.
Hello, my name is Jessica Johnson. I reside at 1208 Fourth Avenue in Esberry Park with my mother, Helen McCurdy. We've been there over 20 something years and I'm having a little issue right now as far as back in 2011, we had got a grant, RCA grant, which was satisfied, August 2021, which I had a letter from the city, Cassandra Dickinson, she sent me and said it was satisfied, but we just had to call her and make sure my mother name got off the list. Unfortunately, last week, we went to refinance and the issue came up again. And my closing was Monday, and as of Monday, we had not got a letter from Esberry. I've been calling every day. I even reached out to someone I knew that worked in Freehold and they said it's all, all you have to do is just write a letter saying that the grant was satisfied, so I could send it to the loan officer, so I can close on this property.
Yeah, so we do have that on the agenda tonight. We amended the agenda to put it on, your subordination of mortgage, so that will be done tonight at the council on the resolution, and tomorrow Cassandra will send you the paperwork.
Okay, thank you so very much.
You're very welcome.
You want to tell her what number it is?
It was just added, so it's?
2022-195.
Yes, it's at the very end of the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you so very much.
But it was modified this afternoon. You're absolutely, you're welcome.
I appreciate it.
You guys better go, or I'm going to close.
My name's Gabriella Burr. I live at 403rd Ave, apartment 12. We, I first wanted to ask when the new permit regulations were implemented, because no one was given notice on our street, so almost every single resident got ticketed on Friday night. No one had any fair notice on this was going to start and these signs have been up since January. I think that we as residents of the city deserve fair notice on this, so that people can get their permits and not get ticketed. I understand that these permits are done so that the residents can actually have the opportunity to park in the peak summer hours, so it feels a bit unfair to get ticketed as a resident and it feels like a money grab. So I'd like an explanation on why we weren't given fair notice and now everyone in the neighborhood has a ticket for parking.
I'm going to butt that to James from parking.
Does that complete your comments, though? Because I'm going to stop.
Go ahead, James, he can answer, that's fine.
So the signs were posted in January, the ordinance was passed in December. We actually, I personally delivered notice to every house on Fourth Avenue, as well as a lot of other streets in the city, put one notice in every mailbox, a letter from myself.
So we actually are part of Rent Jersey Shore, the landlord? So the landlord did not inform us that we were going, that it was going to be enforced?
It was to the residents themselves, so it was in each mailbox.
Okay, so none of our mailboxes had it. And I have another neighbor here and she did not get a notice either. It's in a apartment complex. Can we do a round of warnings, James, or maybe a NICS?
Well, we did warnings for the, we did warnings for the past three months.
This has been in place since January and people were given warnings that were parked illegally, we now just started ticketing. So this has been known to everyone since January.
All I'm saying is can we do like one or two rounds of NICS specifically?
Sure, we can, we can remind everyone of the parking regulations, absolutely.
Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Hi, Matthew Glaze, 531 Cookman Avenue, Esberry Ale House owner. I'm in regards to the street extended closing that was passed by Governor Murphy and extended to November 30 of 2024. We've been granted it the last two seasons and we're here again. I'm representing everyone on 500 block. I have signatures from every retail and residential person in the Steinbeck Building that voted, as well as every retail and restaurant owner on 500 block, all in favor of the street closing, excluding one resident above the Steinbeck Building. This is very crucial and important for us to continue to employ all of our employees. 50% of our employees come back for the summer. With that extended area gave us, we were able to double our employees from the previous years to create job opportunities. With COVID and with everything that has been going on, it also gives people safety and it gives something great to the community. What we did was we had Jim Watt draw up a proposal for the street not to close off the entire thing, because we didn't feel it was fair to the retail section. So we proposed a one-way street with closings from Homesick down, from Lola's, Bonnie Reed and Ale House down, leaving 17 parking spots on the north side and still allowing a delivery spot for all the retail, as well as a sidewalk space. So I could submit this to the town and we could review it and then hopefully discuss it in the next town council meeting. Everyone was going to come once I presented this to the next meeting and we could all give our opinions on why it's so important to us, but I just wanted to present it to you guys in this meeting, so we could prepare for the next one.
Yeah, I think Amy sent, and she just sent it within the last, I'm going to say 24 hours, I just sent it out. I want to manage your expectations. We've gotten an overwhelming number of people not for the street closures. They were fine during the pandemic and that inconvenience, but we've had a number of people and I appreciate the Steinbeck's building, but you have the Post Building, 550 Cookman, so all I would ask is next time that you come, that you expand your reach, right? So if you're saying you have 24 people from the Steinbeck's building, you have 60 people in the Post Building.
Okay.
On the other side.
On Emory's side?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have a number of residences downtown, here's what I'll say, and I don't want to call out buildings, maybe that's not the best, maybe that's not the best way to go. You have a number of residents downtown who don't support the street closures.
Okay, so we'll do, we'll do a survey on all of them and then we'll all come back as business owners next meeting. We just want to present this to you.
Yeah, 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 email that. Is that what Amy gave us? Because then I have it.
This is the petition aspect, she sent an email as well, you can talk next.
You can go to the mic, you just have to give your name, just go through the, you got to do the routine, right?
Okay, Ms. Scott, this is Roni, I'm the owner of Lola's Cafe. We were just told that it was the Steinbeck Building.
Oh, okay, no, expand that. Yeah, 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 expand that.
We'll be more prepared next week for what the needs are.
Yeah, and I'm curious about your businesses, Matt, because what I, what we heard is that it was harming a number of businesses. So I mean, that was, you can't speak twice. And maybe it's worth a meeting where we sit down and talk it out, but you have a number of businesses.
That's what we did on the 500 block, we spoke to every retailer and whatever, we addressed their concerns. That's when we came up with this plan. It really came down to a matter of parking for them, which I find ridiculous. People can never park yet.
No matter what I do, people aren't happy. But the point is, is I do need to address everybody's concerns, right?
What I want to say is that I'm in favor of the town. I'm not here just speaking only as Lola's and man is the same. The feedback that we get is like 95% in favor and you, I guess people speak louder, the 5% that you're hearing. So I guess next week. Yeah, we spoke, all the retail, every retail was present at our meeting. And that's why the plan, we all agreed upon that plan.
Yep, we will, whatever Amy said, I just sent it to the council, but I didn't even look at it yet, and I have a call with Amy Thursday.
All right, so next meeting, we'll?
Amy's on the same page as you guys.
Yeah, she's texting me right now, she's running late, but.
So we'll take a look at it and then reach back out next week.
Any other members wish to be heard? Not seeing any, folks in the public.
Melanie has it, she'll shoot it to all the council.
All right, I'm going to move to close unless anyone's got anything to say. Could I be getting off this easy tonight?
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
All in favor? The meeting is now closed to the public.
Did you want to talk?
Yes, I do.
All right, you got to, you got to, hold. Motion to open, do I have to open it back up?
So do you want to just mention, so we removed the lodge from the agenda tonight, but you're still more than welcome to talk if you'd like to, but that's not on the agenda tonight. Yeah, it's been removed from the agenda.
Yeah, I just want to make a general comment.
Certainly.
City manager and council. I'm getting conflicting mail.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
John Morris, Monmouth Lodge 1101 Esberry Avenue, and I'm also in the DAB Chapter 85, and we're also here in Esberry Park. I'm here representing Monmouth Lodge. We had a reclamation project since 2012, from Sandy Ford reclaiming the lodge, and we had to go back and reestablish it. We did that as a 501(c)(8), going back to the original county deed in 1908, where the lodge was established, was in the deed book in Monmouth County, and it was brought back as a 501(c)(8) corporation. I've been getting mail the last two weeks, people are trying to take action as to Monmouth Lodge, and we're here to put the city on notice that they should come with an attorney because what they're doing is illegal. We're a corporation. We are a corporation, we have the papers, it's a 501(c)(8), nonprofit, from Cincinnati, and we've been doing business in this city the last 12 years to restore the lodge. Last two weeks, parties, known and unknown, been sending letters around saying they're this, they're that, and we've been removed. And I'm here to say that we're still doing business in this city and they would have to serve us and you should ask them for their credentials. Ours were presented in the city tax office, clerk's office, and every mayor without construction permits, building permits, demolition permits, and it's some confusion. I talked to our attorney today and we're coming back with a letter just to clear the air. So I noticed when we drove up, someone in the group is outside. So if they afford to be anything other than Monmouth Lodge or representing Monmouth Lodge, I would request that you ask for their identification. Mine's been on board with the city for years, but I'll bring them back again if necessary. And I'm trying not to have a bitter taste in my mouth, because we put a lot of effort reclaiming that spot on the corner for Esberry Park. So I'd like your consideration when you hear about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to close? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? The meeting is now closed to the public. We are now on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting, minutes of the 4:00 PM, the municipal council regular meeting, minutes of the 6:00 PM.
Close to public.
But Donna, do you want to close to the public?
You can't speak at the mic, but you can sit and listen.
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 just public comments have been closed for the rest of the meeting, but you're all welcome to stay to listen to the business.
But do you want to just tell them it was removed? I'm guessing your VFW?
I'm Monmouth Lodge.
Yeah, so. Okay, so as we mentioned earlier, the city council is not taking any action on Monmouth Lodge tonight. Any information that was placed on the agenda has been removed, so we'll be taking no action tonight. You're welcome, thank you.
And you can grab an agenda packet over there and see it's off.
Go ahead, Melanie.
I have the minutes of the March 23, 4:00 PM, the minutes of the March 23, 6:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
We are now on to the consent agenda resolutions. On the consent agenda, we have Resolution 22-173, a resolution approving special event applications. 22-174, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Code Enforcement Quality of Life Committee, and that appointee is Lisa Bolino. Resolution 22-175, a resolution approving appointments to the City of Esberry Park Green Team, that appointee is Joy Morgan. Resolution 22-176, a resolution of the City of Esberry Park in support of clean water, healthy families, and good jobs. Resolution 22-194, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Mayor's Wellness Committee, and that appointee is Sue Chapman.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
We are on to individual resolutions. The, we have Resolution 22-177, a resolution approving the payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-179, a resolution authorizing an agreement with MASA Recycling for the processing and disposition of recycling materials.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-180, a resolution approving change order number two for Bond Street Improvement Project.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-181, a resolution amending the two-year extension of the contract with Summertime Surf LLC regarding the operation of a seasonal concession involving surf lessons covering the summer seasons of '22 and 2023.
Comment, Melanie?
Yes. So Summertime Surf has a concession out on the north end of the beach. They do a number of things, one of which is high, they teach people how to surf. We reached out and asked them to take on some of the kids of Esberry Park, about 20 per season for summer camp and surf lessons, and without batting an eye, they said yes, free of charge. So I want to give Summertime Surf a shout out for not putting up even an iota of a fight on our ask, and their contract wasn't up until 2023, so they were under no obligation to do it. They did it because we asked them to do it, so kudos to Summertime Surf.
So there's no costs, is there?
No costs, for, as long as you're an Esberry Park resident and meet their guidelines in terms of economic guidelines.
I'm looking for a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-182, a resolution authorizing a professional service contract to Meridian Occupational Health PC for employment exams and physicals.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-183, a resolution authorizing a contract for the installation of an underground sprinkler system.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-184, a resolution authorizing the emergency RBC shaft reconditioning needed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-185, a resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of communators at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-186, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a new Yamaha Viking safety vehicle for the Beach Department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall? Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-187, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a new fire truck for the fire department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-188, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2022 Ford cargo van.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-189, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2022 Mason dump truck.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
22-190, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Kubota for the Beach Department.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-192, a resolution authorizing the purchase of office furniture for various departments within the city.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-193, a resolution authorizing the City of Asbury Park to enter into a third memorandum of understanding with SQF LLC relating to the removal and replacement of certain city-owned utility poles.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Resolution 22-195, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city council to execute a discharge of mortgage for Helena McCurdy for property located at 1208 Fourth Avenue.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
We are now on to ordinances for introduction. We have ordinance 2022-4, which is the 2022 cap rate ordinance with a public hearing date of May 11th.
Our CFO, Joanne, will provide insight on what the cap ordinance is all about.
Hello, council. The cap rate ordinance is a required calculation by the state that gives us a maximum increase to our operating budget. It has to be done every year, and we can never go past that amount when doing our budget, so it's a maximum amount we can't exceed.
Any questions?
Any questions, I'm looking for a motion.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
We are now on to second readings, public hearing. The first public hearing we have is for ordinance 2022-2, which is an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending and supplementing Chapter 7 of the Code of the City of Asbury Park regarding the unofficial reservation of parking.
I can-
Do you want to do an ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is the ordinance that was introduced that will prohibit people from putting out chairs and cones in front of their parking spaces. It will be illegal to do so. Moving forward. This was suggested by the parking committee.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 22-2?
Move it. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If any members of the public would like to be heard regarding the public hearing on ordinance 2022-2, please go to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Not seeing anyone?
Move to close. Second.
All in favor? Motion to adopt ordinance 2022-2.